I'm turning it up.
I got blanket, but not child enough rain blanket in my office. Would you like to throw it around your shoulders?
Recording in progress.
In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM, may be recorded by other local media. Could you please rise to the podium?
My condolences, flag of the United States of America. The Republic of America. One nation, united in the heart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Looks like we have a sound system on. Start this evening recognizing familiar face Karen Marlin, administrative assistant in my office. Karen retiring after 34 years of service here in the town hall. She has been the administrative assistant to the town administrator since 2011, but secretary to the select board from 1990 until 2011. So get in this position. We have a recognition scheduled here in the town hall for Wednesday that we look forward to having Karen at. I wanted to have her here this evening for the community to see and for you to have the opportunity to thank her. She's the first thought for many of our employees, especially our department heads, and for the public when they are looking for help. Oftentimes when something has gone sideways and when they would normally find help, they can't get it or not satisfied with it. She's the friendly face that greets them. Often they have to calm down, somebody who's upset, and then provide direction to how we can resolve the issue. I don't have an assistant town administrator, and this board is well aware of that, but in many ways, out of necessity, Karen has served as it and fulfilled that role. She's the person who has done so much work on your behalf. A lot of it you know about, much of it you don't even know, whether it's research, putting together information. But I know you've always recognized that she's there in the background. It would probably take me an hour to describe everything that she does. She's often the steadying hand at the wheel here in the town hall. When I'm in a meeting or on the phone, a site visit, or maybe otherwise unavailable, she's the person where the problem often bubbles up to first. And she is always able to at least temporarily solve it, sometimes resolve it, talking with the department heads. And we're gonna miss her. We're gonna miss her terribly. I'm very happy for her, happy for her husband, Jack, who joins her here this evening. He is recently retired and has got their house ready, I'm sure, for Karen to be able to join him. I wish you both well. I wish you good health.
Thank you.
And I thank you for everything that you've done, not just for all the employees, some of whom are here this evening. And I think you're upset with me because I didn't invite more employees to be here. But also for all of the town's residents, and most importantly, to me, for me. I remember the first day that we met. You may not remember, but I came into the office and I asked you how long you worked with the town. You told me how long, and then you sort of responded in a little bit of a questioning way about whether you were gonna continue to work with the town. It caught my attention, and I said, "Oh, I hope you're gonna be here." And, you know, always, I think exhibiting your humble nature in that response, for sure. But again, I thank you and I wish you nothing but good health and...
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Larry. What's that? Gee, it seems just like yesterday, Karen.
No, I gotta tell you, Karen, like so many of the other employees in town hall here, they're basically unsung heroes, but Karen, for sure. For a number of years, she served as secretary to the board and made us all pretty darn good and better than we deserved, for sure. And then having moved over to the town administrator's office as head of responsibilities, extremely, I mean, many of the processes that we, Jen does and other people in the town hall, Karen initiated them, fine-tuned them. She's the resource that I'll tell you is gonna be a huge gap here come, in a very short couple of days here, when Karen leaves. Because when she leaves here, a wealth of knowledge goes with it. As far as the machinations of how things work and didn't work, it does work. It's all up here. And I know she spent in Northern a lot of time over the last few months trying to write it down for Jen and the rest of the Jens of the world here to help streamline things, but it's gonna be a resource that we're gonna miss. But that being said, I'm so excited for you and Jack, as far as being able to, you retired, every day's gonna be a sanity check with you, and it's gonna be fantastic. Take some trips with you, spend some quality time with your family. It's a wonderful experience. You and I are experiencing it as great, and we should have a good health and longevity when it comes to retirement. But as far as, you know, from a personal standpoint, Karen's been a good sounding board from me. You know, when I needed a sanity check or a reality check, you know, I'd just pop and say, "What did you think about this? What do you think about that? I bought that one over there." And, you know, very well-rounded, take me down a couple of notches, you know, and give me substantial advice in the way that she could. And it's much appreciated, again. Tremendous resource for me, you know. When someone in the community had a question, you know, "How do we find out?" I'd just either pick up the phone and call Karen or refer them right to Karen directly. And never a complaint. People are always satisfied with, even when they're told that they can't do what they want to do. You just have a way of, you know, telling people nicely that it's a great idea, but not today. Yeah, it's not gonna happen. But she has just been, for me personally, a wonderful individual and resource and a good friend, and kids grow up together. The town has been well-served. You truly are a public servant, and you've served well. It's greatly appreciated from me personally, but from the community too.
Thank you.
So enjoy it. And Jack, you gotta make breakfast.
Every day.
Every day.
Yeah, I, just as long as I've been walking in town hall, I've always known the Karen. So it's just, you've just always have been here perennial. You know, it's just, and anything, it's like you said, anything I need to know, I usually start with you because you know the right place to go and push me around and stuff like that. And I will say that if you haven't, that one time we had a casual conversation, if you hadn't pulled out the town charter and shown me that the public service director job had never been filled, I don't know when that might have happened. And so that was because you pointed that out. It was like, wow, I can't believe we missed that. That's something big we need to do. And so that's just one small example of, you know, many little gems you put out there that have, I know personally I've taken action on. So hopefully, all of our go-to requests have not pushed you out the door sooner than you wanted to go. But no, it's just, you are irreplaceable, and you'll be sorely missed. And I wish I had more time to work with you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Should I say?
No. We haven't had the pleasure to work too long together, but Mr. Alberto and Mr. Larry's words are actually really touching. And goes to show a lot of what they know of you, so you certainly will be missed. And I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
It's gonna be fun. Enjoy it.
Yes, and look.
I mean, I could just be repetitive, you know, feeling all the same things that have been said, but I don't mean for myself, but I'm always fired or something. And, you know, always, always patient and kind, and I can't thank you enough for that. You definitely are a resource. You've been a resource for us, you are our go-to. And you're always more than happy to do it. Never, ever made me feel like I was putting you out. So you will be hard to replace, and it's got some big shoes to fill. And we will miss you, and I hope that you go on lots of little island vacations. Oh, yes. I know you love that. We will. Enjoy it. You deserve it.
Yes, thank you.
So, well, I'll start by saying I have a lot of clients that when the second retires, within a few months, somebody will have worked hard time, so maybe we can keep a record, just in case. But you've been a tremendous help for me, even last year as vice chair. I knew, I don't get a lot of numbers from landlines, so I know when 978-664 were coming in. Karen let me know that, you know, "We kinda wanna pay people. Can't find another signature on this warrant, a payroll. Do you mind, like, looking?" I'm like, "Yes." And I felt like, "I gotta do this right away. I can't let Karen down." But it's because of how helpful you can be. And it just, it can be, when you're a new select board member, because there's no written rules or sometimes book, and like, it can be something where, when you finally figure out who you can, like, ask, it helps out. So that was a big thing for me. And, yeah, no, I hope you enjoy retirement and 34 years in the same place. That's, I mean...
Well, like Steve said, it seems like yesterday. It's just hard to believe it's gone by so quickly.
Yeah, so, I mean, and, oh, but I wish you all the best, and it's, it's time to retire. It's time to retire. And again, thank you for what you've done before I got around, and I, you know, I've seen it since here, so thank you. And we have a little something for you. All right?
Do you wanna read from it first, so while you have the microphone there? You just wanna read what it says quick.
So, Karen Marlin, 34 years, Town of North Redding. I was told you don't like the extravagant, and you are very lucky that Jen didn't tell me about it before. A lot bigger. So...
Oh, I thought that was a beer flask.
They can be whatever she wants.
Can we just call a brief recess, Mr. Chairman? Can we just call a brief recess?
I'm gonna call a brief recess.
Well done.
There you go.
Yes.
Do you have the, is it the question and answer that you were, that you gave Jen on Friday? That you have?
Yeah.
Okay, I can share that. That might make, make me.
Okay. Is any of this on my?
Nope, I have it here. And I'm gonna share.
Okay. Alright, as I said, um, open this next call, these questions. Um, if you click on the first link, my, yeah, can I read my ballot?
This is to the town clerk's website, right?
Yeah. Good.
You go.
Sorry.
Alright, there you go.
Okay. So on the town clerk's website, P, writing on the new announcements. Um, we have the, the early voting schedule. That started, we scroll down, so that started last Saturday. Uh, we went here at nine to five. We wrapped the line at nine o'clock. So with this, um, we had on average of two hundred, we had two hundred and thirty-one that came in early on Saturday, and then today was two hundred and five. So been pretty busy, pretty steady. This is the schedule, um, for this week, where we're open at two, three. Um, and four nights, the Tuesday and the Thursday nights. So we wanna flip back out of that mic. So that's the Q and A. Did you go down one more? That's the sample ballot. There's a lot on the ballot. This is a sample ballot. You can pick it out if you want. We have copies in town hall. We have, um, you can call them, they're posted everywhere in town hall. It's, uh, has eyes, eight questions, and the two more writing questions at the very end. You can scroll down a little bit and see the back. Okay? And then on the bottom there, there's something you can actually download or purchase as well. There's a lot on there, so I suggest that you take your time to look at it. Um, you do it. The vocational school is on there. Obviously, they wrap, as in the course. Okay, so you can back out of that, please. Over on the left-hand side, the red information for voters. Everybody go out, wanted to help. You went out, come on, Mike, some, wait there. And put them out. See, everybody go out, have a look through the mail. It explains all the five speech questions about, um, this is how you vote, writing questions, and obviously, because, uh, sustained, um, blanking. So, um, so for that, we have books in boxes as well, in washrooms, and online, and in our home. Go back on that, please. So the, the Q and A is at a couple of places. So it is, we're, I guess, after, so we, you already looked at ballot. So the second one down, where can I register voter, update my voter registration? Um, put them out like. This is where you can, being ranked, and, alright, um, you need to do this by October twenty-sixth. Any change between your voter registration, when you move, I suggest, um, well, let me go to registration soon, rather than later. You flip back on the real link. As I said, um, October twenty-sixth, the deadline. After that, you know, I can, when you vote, register, um, have to stay in the same, so you scroll down a little bit. So, um, town first clocks will be open October twenty-sixth. We're gonna be there anyways, in person, while we're voting. You know, I told you, voter registration, you wanna reach the vote, come in, from the nine to five. The next one down is how can I request a throw-in, got some people, I know. You've already mailed out about, I wanna say, thirty-seven hundred mailing ballots. You can apply online, you can check the Yeldon website, the white aware, you can email us, at ballots@northridgencam.com. Go right to me, um, like, you want to put in that SEC, like, state, too. And then on the top, the documents, yeah. So again, as I said, all we're up to here are the elections. Put them out, the documents, and the law, yeah. So, um, you, say, we're here at Yeldon's website, it has everything that you need for, like, events. So, and you can track the ballot. Put them out. If you, if you requested a mailing ballot, you can track it, since, uh, we have, compared to the computer, the manual mail. You can print it, we have, as it would be, that when you see back, when you checked it, it's still here. Uh, we had to reject a few short noise signatures. In that case, you would have to reject the ballot, and then mail another ballot. Um, you can track all that activity. Then you go back, like, you register the vote here. And go back to the Q and A, please. Alright, so... Yeah, these, all of these dates and times are also posted on town websites, like, Alamo, and Home P. There's also a copy attached, if people want to, uh, download a copy, because now we have copies in office, that residents are skating. Um, so laying off the dates, and they can spend accordingly. And just scroll down, like, we are open, like I said, we're open one night, it's, it's Tuesdays and Thursdays. Uh, let's see, where do I vote on election day? Okay, we have, there was so, S.A.R. offices, off. There's a polling location for election day. Polls are open, uh, seven AM to PM. We will have, um, I thought two, two, seven, and we're gonna have three, pretty detailed. So we're gonna have two detailed inside, one detailed outside. I will also be adding handicap parking. We have, there's a couple of spots, we enter into some licenses. I am going to add, I mean, three more spots and exit. The wall around, I think, with home there, and add some more handicap parking spots, not right there. Just to make it easier to, um, the late hand, go out, and. Uh, let's see, deadline is a little, two, police, or, or, polling, yeah, oh, military overseas. So if we have about thirty that are in the military, you have to scroll down for the volume, get the data. So if you're in the military, you have about thirty, um, that are, either permanently, or, and I'll show when they return, are in the military. They are retired, or they can vote electronically, electronically, and anybody, um, anybody who's overseeing the military. And military and their family, too, as well, if they are. Uh, they are the only ones that can vote electronically, through process, through application. Um, so we have about thirty of those. Uh, they're all over the place. How old? And back up, yeah, and it tells you all the, um, publications. There is an application, you have to, through residents in North Reading. Uh, you have to have a North Reading analyst on there, and your overseas address, and obviously, sign the application. And you can go back, if you'd like. Alright, now, let's see, we're good. Absentee over the counter. Absentee really isn't, uh, that is, that's old school, you gotta excuse, uh, we really don't count anybody absentee. But if you wanna be, all of a sudden, it comes up the last minute, um, you're not gonna be around, you can make the polls. You can go absentee over the counter until you move time to leave for the election. That's a bit. How, where, how do I return my voter early down? Well, we have, uh, you can, we have a twenty-four hour drop box. Um, we had, we empty multiple times all day. It's a safe drop box. Uh, we have residents that are worried of the cause of the ballots, and the box is very safe. Um, you can deliver it to town first clocks, you can hand deliver it anytime, during throwing, person voting. Even then, makes it with an absentee. Um, or even mail it, it's posted page. You already know that I track my ballot. Where do you find the election results? The last thing I do before I leave the office at night, I will post them on the town clerk's website, P. Um, with the lights, too, they're always on here. Um, disability, if you are busy, like, hearing impaired, you can also vote. If you can't pack the ballot, there, there's a receipt you got, you'll have to contact, um, myself, uh, for that procedure. If you don't return your census, you are made inactive. So I always help people, return your census. Um, it's gonna take you long to get a ballot. You have to show ID, you have to sign an application, you put in your ballot. Um, so return the annual census. These are the little things that I wanted to mention, is, everybody is used to go to the, if you go to vote, it's all, you typically have one cold gas check. And then one machine. You either double up on cold gas, or pieces, or more, cold gas checkers, which you, which means, you check out, a bunch of them. This will allow you to manually, the things, remember, at the new town meeting, the program needed money for brand voting. As soon as this election is over, I'm gonna go to the new team, we could have them, and will have them, for the may come elections in next year. Folks, hey, okay, we've been voting for twenty years now, so, um, I have to, um, the latest and greatest technology. These machines are voted in fact, we're gonna actually press a button, whether it's for the passive ballot or not. So, thanks, um, and the other thing that I wanted to mention. Um, that's, I was pretty much, yeah, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, I, yeah, I'm the mastermind, kind of, plan of elections. But it takes a ton of work, and, 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 and I just wanted you to thank, certainly, the North Reading Council Department, for their details. A.D.W., um, they do the setup right now, um, they're the ones with the Danas, and the high school. Um, the full workers, you know, they're right in the line of fire, they, you know, they work, they're the voters, and the person, they work the whole team. I didn't know all along, I, you know, they're, they're there, and that crazy dog, and they had to know, um, you know, through my day situation. And, um, obviously, in my office, staff, I'm Lee and Malaney and myself, you know, you don't know what is involved in, in, on election, to actually do that. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of, we don't plan for it, you know, it's always, but, um, and it's the same model, so you have action for it, and nine. So I just wanted to, I hope I didn't forget anybody, but, um, you know, it, it takes everybody, and, and I always plan for the worst, and hope for the best. And... I think that was, oop, that's it. I think I've done everything, but who is, any questions, please?
Any questions before we?
No, Mr. Chair, just want, thanks Sue and her team, every election I've been, I've seen, uh, since being a resident, it's been, it's been extremely well, so, thank you, Sue. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Um, I do have a question, the, the ballot's already over. I already voted, so I'm, I guess I'm wondering, the actual purpose, I'm just, does it process thing? Maybe I'm missing.
For, oh, for why we have to do this?
Yeah.
Good question, can some?
Sure, and the town clerk can certainly jump in, but there's a requirement to sign a warrant, I believe it's fourteen days before, um, the scheduled election. And the election date is technically the November fifth, but the vote, as you said, voting's been going on for weeks now at this point, for a ballot, et cetera.
Uh, anything to add to that, Susan?
It says seven days before the election.
Oh, seven.
Seven days before the election. So the first call is required, that's, and the bloodboard, beside the arm, so. Uh, I don't know if that's here, but, um.
He is here, yes.
Required to sign it, and he's required to.
Hold on. And as, as far as the North, Mr. Chair, through you, as far as the questions, the North Reading, is there any, what constitutes putting the costs on the ballot? Is there, uh, is, you know, the override, we put the cost on the ballot, but for these, we haven't. I'm just wondering, is there something that triggers putting the cost on it or not?
I'll, I'll do my best to answer through you, um, Mr. Chairman. Um, we, you know, follow the template for debt exclusion language that the Department of Revenue puts out, which, uh, in the case of the questions, refers to excluding the debt for a specific project. Um, we know that came up as a question during the town meeting, and it's something that I think we can definitely correct or improve on for the town meeting warrant. I'd have to look further into our ability to put the question, or the dollar amount in the question, for the exclusion. Uh, but we know it's a question that's out there. Uh, we're simply following the format the Department of Revenue provides us.
Do we put a dollar amount where we, uh, went off of the high school municipal project?
Uh, I'd have to go back and look, I have it, Mr. Massey, we may have.
Alright, I thought that was a great suggestion to include. I think people should really understand how much they're voting on it. And I think I don't have, if you're not paying attention, it's a whine voting, so, thank you.
Anyone else before we vote? Mr. Massey, can I have a motion, please?
Good question, we did.
Public comment, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and sign the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four state election warrant.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion?
I just wanna say, I think the debt exclusion, didn't we post that on the website, so people can find that information?
Through you, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, yeah, so we have, uh, a, 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 a column, primer, or a summary, that we'll put out on the website, that will include the dollar amounts, not only for the projects, but for the annual bonding, and for the impact on the tax rate and/or the single-family tax bill. I expect that'll be up tomorrow, and I think we're gonna get to, um, used already to put in the newspaper as well. Um, just because of the Office of Campaign and Local Finance implications, I, I did ask that to get reviewed, to make sure we didn't overstep one way or the other in the questioning. But I expect to get that response back, uh, early tomorrow, and, uh, we'll get it out there. But, you know, to be clear, um, I, I don't wanna rehash everything that was presented at town meeting, but the debt exclusion, that we've approved, would increase the ability to assess taxes on folks for repaying the bond for both the Jefferson Street Bridge and for, uh, the Fire State, Fire Department ladder truck. Uh, in the case of the combined amount of the projects, um, that would be a fifteen cents per thousand dollars of valuation, property tax implication, uh, or a hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-five cents for the average single-family home valued at eight hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars. Just state that for the record, because I know folks are asking that. But I expect we'll get that out this week, so folks can see it.
Thank you.
Alright.
Um, Mrs. Gonzalez, so, Mr. O'Leary, who's on the vote?
Aye.
Mr. Walner? Mr. Massey? Mrs. Gonzalez? Chair's eye. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, congratulations again, to your grandson.
Alright, thank you.
We'll just move on while we're signing, unless we can move on to our minutes.
Thank you.
Mr. Massey, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, please.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion?
I do have further discussion, just gonna wait a second.
Me?
Just a, a question, um, when, so, um, the secretary writes down all the, everything she hears, and then there's editing that's done afterwards. Are the, are the, is the editing matched up to what was said? Are we verifying that the edited versions are being matched to what was actually said during the meeting? Or are we adding new information?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Generally, we are not going back to check what was said, and we've talked, we've asked, and, um, the minutes are, once approved by the board, uh, but we're, we generally are not, unless we are asked, to go back and look at the video.
Okay, so I'm looking at page thirty-three, PDF, the page thirty-three. And I remember the discussion, but there's a lot of details here that were never said. And so I think we should have a standard of, what was said is what should be recorded, and not get into, like, editing and revising what was intended, or things like that. Because then it creates a whole nother level of, um, scrutiny. It, it, it allows us potentially to rewrite what's being said, and that's not, minutes are for, minutes are for recording what happened.
Okay. Any further discussion? You're not, all those in favor? Aye? Closed?
Nope.
Mr. O'Leary, say aye or no?
I said aye.
So... Mr. Massey, next, please, please.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the October town meeting session minutes for the October seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Seeing none, although.
No, just, I'm, I'm just wondering if, you know, you mentioned, let's make sure the actual discussions get into town meeting, uh, into the meeting minutes, right? So, did you have any exception on, on to the October seventh meeting minutes, Mr.?
Who's, who's running the chair? Are you, if I had anything to say?
I said any further discussion, so he's speaking. Would you, would you like to discuss?
I have nothing to discuss.
So, I don't technically remember us making motions to pass over, uh, those fourteen, fifteen. So that, to me, when we got the minutes sent to us, they did not have those on this. Now I get the packet, which, by the way, I have about two hours of advance notice to read through the packet for this meeting, uh, today. And things changed, so, I think I okayed meeting minutes that were not reflective of what's here. As far as October seventh, that's not my recollection.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Actually, I'm staying. I wasn't even there. Sorry.
Two of six.
Oh, I was in here.
Yeah. Two of six, just thank you. Former member reports, Mr. O'Leary and all the new members together.
That, just, uh, just in relation to Hillview, based upon a town meeting's action of authorizing an additional hundred thousand dollars from retained earnings, to look at potential for different use of the facility, or even demolition of that facility, before they spend the two-point-five million dollars on the roof. Uh, they're willing to just move forward to take a look at it, and see what the expenditure would be, and what it would cost, and then what, uh, plans would be moving forward. So before they, uh, do the roof, they're gonna do some investigation on that. And, uh, they're grateful for, um, the opportunity to take a look at that prior to spending the two-point-five million dollars on the roof. So that's gonna be bigger than taking, they're gonna do it, uh, post haste, you know, rather quickly, take a look at it, weigh it, and then, uh, we'll be reporting back as to what any, if any different conclusions have been, come to. Again, just remind people that we're looking for someone on the Conservation Commission. Again, I know there's been some applicants, if anybody else is still interested, uh, please, um, put forth an application. Uh, Mr. Chairman, all set, thank you.
Mr. Walner?
Uh, no, no report, thank you.
Mr. Massey?
Uh, yes, a few things, uh, one, some good news is, um, I met with, uh, General Manager for Red Municipal Light Department. The electrical industry is growing, there's no doubt about it, as far as sustainability, as far as all electric, uh, buildings, et cetera. They're taking on a new load, in order for them to really adjust to that new lu, new load, they're gonna need land to be able to create energy, and to be able to store energy. I had a really great meeting with them, on one of the longest, uh, resident North Reading. And, um, they're looking into the business of acquiring land. They do expect to come forward to North Reading, uh, with some, some land acquisition proposals. I thought, you know, Red Municipal Light has been a great partner of this town for a very long time. Um, on top of that, they provide, uh, great service, and they provide a cheap bill, uh, to say it, uh, short. They are going to continue, continue to grow. In order for that, and in order for us to grow, we need to maybe think of partnering, uh, with them, to offer to continue to grow, which then brings back the payment to our pockets, um, over the long term. I did talk with them about, um, some potential, uh, options, you know, not necessar, you know. Really talking about a lot of different things to say, hey, you know, what if, North Reading, or what if I came back to you and said that we're not interested in cash? And we're interested in maybe, um, allocating some of what would be the cost for the land, uh, for guaranteed projects. And more what I'm thinking of is, then immediately you allocate money to a said project. It's not money to a free cash, and, and, and we can do what we want. I think the residents deserve for that money to go to an allocation that can repay us in the long term. Whether that be solar panels on the roof, when they provide the solar panels. Whether that be solar panels on multiple municipal buildings. Um, I know they're in the conversation with the school department as well, uh, to put some solar panel on their roof, uh, as was designed. That's all I got.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, so, uh, we, planning, uh, Better Numbers C.C., um, has a vacant seat, and they will be interviewing for that position on Wednesday, the thirtieth, at six-thirty, and on November twelfth, at six-thirty. And they invite any of the board members to please come, and, yes, Mr. Gilbert.
And they would, hopefully, we could provide feedback on one date or the other.
Oh, I got it, it's both, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, so, one or the other, so they asking for us to give a better date?
And to give feedback on either of the dates, yep.
Okay. So, um, Wednesday, the thirtieth, at six-thirty, or November twelfth, if you could look at our calendars.
Was it October thirtieth or November twelfth?
Yes. For the facilities.
In what time?
CTC.
Would it be at night?
At 6:30.
6:30?
For 12.
So...
I can, I can do either.
Do either?
Yep.
I can't do the 30.
You can't do the 30? How's the 12th looking?
You can do that, huh?
Yeah. Mr. O'Leary?
Yep.
Okay, so it looks like we're looking at the 12th then. So, and they would like to do a separate meeting, a separate joint meeting after that for us to decide for that seat.
Maybe a point.
Okay. All right, so, will you let them know?
Yeah, we'll let the town planer know. So that, I don't know if that November 12th meeting would be a regular or special meeting of the Planning Commission, but the intention would be to post a meeting for this board so that you could go and participate in the interviewing. And I think if we want to keep the process moving, we could look to do the appointment. And this would only be for the balance, this would only be through May of this year. There would be an election for the balance of the term. And whoever's appointed could run for that seat. Anybody who's eligible could run. But we could do that appointment as soon as the 21st in November, if that's what folks are comfortable with. Otherwise, the next regular meeting.
I think it's December 4th.
Yes.
What do we have?
Let's see how.
How many candidates do we have now? And is there a deadline?
It wasn't a deadline, it has passed.
I thought we had four.
I thought we had four picked.
Yeah, four.
Let's see how the talk goes, and then we can schedule the vote.
We could, we could decide.
We'll just do that.
And also, Community Impact Team is doing another Drug Take Back Day at the O'Leary Center, not here in the morning till 1:00 on Saturday, October 26th. It's a great opportunity if you have some expired drugs, things that you don't need in your cabinet anymore. Trying to educate people not to flush them down the toilet, not to put them into the water system. If you can't make that, they also have something called a deactivation bag that has certain chemicals in it that, even liquid or pills, that will deactivate them. So then they would be safe to throw away. And I believe you could probably pick those up at the police station. And pet meds are also welcome. So, Saturday, October 26th, at the Edith O'Leary Center, from 9:00 to 1:00. That's all.
So, I've avoided about talking about state level issues like the plague, but there's one question on the ballot, and that's what I'm going to make as part of my new business that I do take personally, and that's question five. I was a busboy at 14, actually, two weeks before Fall Dad, and I worked under the table until they could put me on the books. And then I was a waiter, and then I was a bartender. And people worked really hard, and they did that job, which sometimes was drooling. The hours were irregular, the shifts were irregular, and they did it because, in most cases, those that put in the effort, that worked hard, blew past the minimum wage. I can tell you, there were very few people in high school, as me being a busboy, who made more than me, and even working 60 hours at the Gafter on Christmas. So, then when you become a waiter, while I was in school at BU, I worked two jobs, because that's how I could afford to go there. And I can tell you, if one of those jobs wasn't at a restaurant, I would have had to work either longer hours somewhere else or a third. I haven't talked to anyone in North Reading, any of my ex-colleagues, there's a lot, that still work in restaurants everywhere, and I'm talking North Reading, every restaurant, who is in favor. If there is, and there could be, but if there's a bartender or waiter in favor of this, I haven't found them. So, again, I hate to usually do this, but this is something that will affect local a lot. The idea that some overreaching bureaucratic law, which by the way, is going to raise prices on everything, I won't even get into that, but the idea that then even no offense to all my friends that are waiters and dishwashers, that they should get a cut too, just because they're, you know, in the building. I'm sorry, but people work really hard and they put up with a lot. I mean, I know we put up with a lot. I was a bartender, let me tell you something. The amount of people that tried to take a left on Route 1 North that I had to stop was a lot. So again, not to go on a rant about it, but like, I, I worked in that industry, and it literally put me through school. And it just, I feel like there's somebody out there, either a single parent who is at a restaurant where they can work three, four shifts with sometimes favorable hours and still be home, or a student who, you know, those extra three hours of having to work and make or break in a better grade, who is going to be hurt with this. And I get the intention, right, that, yes, there are a few restaurants where maybe, but here, I feel like this is just an award, a reward for those that are going to be like, now I don't have to work hard, because then now we're all in it together. Awesome. Because communal anything works out so well when it comes to money. So, again, there's my little thing. I'm sorry, I know it's kind of out of the premise of it, but, you know, it's really personal to me, so I just felt like I couldn't, I had to take an opportunity to say it. So, thank you for listening. Mr. Public Comment, is it, I don't know, please?
Yes, I, I don't understand.
You gotta.
My wife doesn't say me.
You gotta.
You gotta come up to the microphone.
So they know you're there.
Tell me who you are and your address.
I don't understand, I think it's 6 and 13 about the, about the, I forget what the wording is.
Debt exclusion?
Yeah, what's the wording in there? I forget. But anyway, I don't know what the, what it means that the, that the, that the bond is not, I forget the word they use. Not beholden or not something to the, to the two and a half. Would you explain? I don't understand the whole.
So usually, you know, I've been pretty strict, but this is a local one, we'll respond to this public comment. What it means, Mr. Denaro, is that we will increase the tax levy over two and a half so we can have new borrowing potential for those two projects versus trying to find the money some other way, which did go through. So that, that's, that are pretty.
Would you say that once again?
So what we do is we allow the town to increase taxes over the two and a half to include new monies for these two projects.
No, if you do that, who, the town is still paying, or the residents is still paying for the two and a half.
Well, the two and a half is always there. This is above and beyond.
Because we can't go above and beyond without that.
Right, so I mean, what, what's the, the benefit of that is that the state can, I mean, the town can borrow more money?
Yes.
Without impacting current services.
Right. Because if it doesn't pass.
Hold on, hold on. I just wanted to clarify though, but we're not going to rehash town meeting.
No, no, no. It just doesn't, doesn't impact current services. So above and beyond what we've already appropriated at town meeting to operate the town, we're asking for, outside of that, operating budget, additional funds to buy the fire truck and fix the bridge, outside of proposition two and a half. And I think the town administrator said, the average home, it's $120 a year, right?
$165.
$155 a year for the term of the loan. And then once the loan is paid off, it goes away.
No, I thought when that came up and we voted for the, the truck and for the bridge, that it was the two and a half was paying for it. Wasn't that the case?
Still got to go to the ballot.
No, still got to go to the ballot. So this is the ballot. If it fails, we'll find the money somewhere else, so I'm all right.
Another question I want to ask.
I just want to correct myself. So it's $121.65 for the average single family home, or 15 cents.
Per month?
Per thousand, that's per year.
Per year.
So, Mr. Denaro, that one was a question, the next one can be a comment, because I can't, I just did it as a courtesy because it's very pertinent, but the next one has to be a comment, because this isn't a public hearing, and I can't, I can't go back and forth.
Well, you got to ask something. Where would I get my information?
There was a three and a half hour town meeting on October 7th. This was discussed, correct? I wasn't there.
I was there.
It's going to be.
But hold on, no, no, that's it. I'm sorry, that's when the discussion happened, Mr. Denaro, and we had a discussion here.
Okay, I just got a question about voting.
And we just answered it.
No, a different, a different one, different question. Yeah, I'll tell you what it is, you don't have to answer me.
Fair.
Okay. When you, when you fill out your ballot, and you put it in machine, you put it in right side up or downside?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
I think that one you can ask, there's actually.
Reads either way.
Very good poll operator.
Reads either way.
There was a controversy. It wasn't me, but somebody that my wife knew voted. And the police officer had to tell the person to allow, to get the person's ballot, give it to him again. Because he put it upside down.
Okay.
And they said it wasn't valid if you turn it upside down. I don't know, that's what I heard.
I'm sure there'll be, there's a lot of qualified poll members. I would ask whoever.
Well, there were officials there all the time, but it's always controversy, which way is it? We always ask the question.
Yeah, so.
If it's not ready, it gets rejected, and then it gets pulled out and counted differently.
Okay.
Well.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm taking my time.
Anyone else? Please, Mr. Scalater.
Mike Scalater, 240 Martins Landing Unit 102. I'm Mr. Chairman through you to the town administrator. I would like to, like to see the following change be incorporated the next town meeting, when the Select Board CPC School Committee and/or Finance Committee vote on whether to recommend an article or not when the results are split. So just using Article 13 as an example, the Select Board voted 3 to 2 to recommend, and that was how it was read at the town meeting. However, the casual voter would not have any idea which Select Board member was for or against the Article 13. So for transparency reasons, when the Select Board is split on an article, the names of the Select Board members should be read at the town meeting so that the voters understand which Select Board member voted for and against the article in question. The graphic that's displayed above at the town meeting should also reflect the names as well. I think it's important to provide the voters with a complete picture when there's a split vote. Thank you, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Scalater. Anyone else here? Comment? Anyone online? Mr. Gilberlin?
I don't see any, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, we can move on to the next item.
The next item is to reconsider a request for the sale of town land at 14 Audubon Road and 8 Audubon Road. These are two parcels that were
To my, please.
acquired by the town through tax type of foreclosure a number of years ago. On May 20th, the board had voted to authorize the sale of these parcels at auction for a combined sale price of $174,900, allocated roughly 21%, 79% between the smaller and the larger parcel. There was a requirement for a, an approval, not required plan, to be approved by the Planning Commission, which occurred in, I think, May or June of this year, so that the sort of property line that needed to be drawn to carve out a portion of a larger block for sale hasn't in fact been drawn and recorded at the registry deeds. The auction was held in September. There were no, no bids offered at the minimum price of $174,900. We had received two inquiries, one from Mr. Magazin, one from another individual. However, it's only Mr. Magazin who showed up at the auction, and he declined to submit a bid. And then he submitted an electronic communication that I believe was forwarded to everybody, but it was received and then put in the meeting packet for this evening as well with, I believe, a proposal. And Mr. Magazin was here, and I guess take it from here to the extent you want to hear from him.
Last time I was here, you caught me off guard, asking me how much I'd pay for the property. I didn't have any research, so I did go out and research all the town sales for the last 20 years. And it, I have copies for you if you want. Taking the data that I compiled, and going through that with a, prorating it per square foot. As you can see, if I purchased the property based on what everything else was sold, then if you see, there's 15,200 square feet. The prorated value would come anywhere from less than a dollar to $12,000. I offered you $50,000 for the property, which is more than you've gotten from anybody else per square foot. To me, you know, again, you caught me off guard last time. I didn't have an offer for you. I have an offer for you.
With all due respect, Mr. Magazin, how do we know? Mr. Chair, sorry. How can we understand where this is sourced from? This is just.
I have the deeds right here.
I mean, with respect.
Yeah?
This is just, there's no title updated, there's no. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gilberlin?
I, I don't, I haven't reviewed this listing. I have no reason to doubt the information they provided either. But the one thing that I will share is that it's likely that each of these transactions, either each of the land that was not able to be developed.
Right.
Or they had a restriction on it preventing it from being developed.
That's.
I haven't, I haven't reviewed these, so I don't mind.
Yeah.
But I'm knowing at least 10 years of the history and going back, there has been a restriction that's been put in place that has probably capped the value of what these parcels are worth. Again, that's not to say that we shouldn't do something differently in this instance. I do feel an obligation to share that.
That was going to be my comment. Also, in my time on this board.
And that's not correct if you do check those deeds.
In my time on this board, you've always put a no building restriction on it.
And there's no building on, going on, on the property that I'm acquiring.
You're building on what you have.
That is correct.
So, but if we said let's put a restriction, you'd say, no way? I'm just trying to make it apples to apples. Like if it was sold with a restriction, it wouldn't be, would it still be useful to you?
The only restriction that I prefer is that I can still put a leaching field over there.
Well, that's what you need it for, right?
Right.
But you wouldn't need to put a shed or garage or?
That's fine. You can totally restrict that kind of thing.
And I, and I think that, and I'm going to go to my other colleagues, well, it's, and I appreciate the data. I think it's a sensitivity that buildable land in North Reading right now, you know, I don't need to tell you, you're in real estate. I mean, it's like, if you got, if you got two acres, there's a $2.5 million house on it. Thank you for playing. I'm not saying that's your case, but that's, you know, pretty much. So I think that we are in a situation right now, you know, if you've watched any meetings in the last year, where, you know, we could use some extra money. So what I'm saying is it's something where, when we investigate it like this and try to like, apples to apples based on this list, because this is helpful, it's more of, there, all five residents of this board are going to get asked, could you have gotten more? I mean, that's always going to be the question, right? So that's why, if it's something where it is apples to apples, then your offer and... then your offer and that 50 is pretty reasonable. However, if it's something where, you know, in two, three years, it could become something where it's like, wow, that really, that, you know, that property's worth a lot more because of X. So that's why, like, you know, I think that's where every colleague's coming from. So, Mr. Wong, Mr. O'Leary?
I just think that if our min was 174, is that what you said, Michael?
It was 174,900.
Yeah, I think we should just drop the min. I'm not saying 50,000, I think we should drop the min to be something reasonable. Because it does have to go up for bid, and let the market drive the price. So I think we step it down, see what happens. If it doesn't happen, we step it down to min.
I think you already stepped down. Mr. Magazu?
I, I agree on dropping the min and re-auctioning it. And, you know, why don't we use that 50 and bring it out to the public? Let everybody that's interested show up. You know, then you, you're not saying, oh, you gave this guy an extraordinary deal. Anybody can step up.
Yeah, just, I think that-
And, and as going against your, your thing about, uh... Sorry, I lost my train of thought.
And again, when I say that to him, I'm not-
There are a few of these deeds that allow for expansion, so.
Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with some of these, but, and some of them were for septic systems for homes. And to clear up some lot line issues in relation to where someone's septic system was on town old land and things of that nature, to get them resolved. And again, I, first of all, you know, I go back to, I guess, 2019.
Right, we, we actually approved this in 2019, in 2020, and-
Yeah, so 2019, 2020, we asked Mr. Magazu as a board collectively and unanimously to go back and spend some money, you know, with the intention of offering it for sale and the potential for him to buy it. The board collectively and unanimously said, well, go out and lay out exactly what you need, what you want to do, and bring it back to us and make, make the expenditure gamble on us, which he did, you know. And then the pandemic hit, and we didn't deal with it for three, four years.
One correction on that?
Okay.
At 2019, January of 2020, I was getting, me and Mr. Nikosia, we're getting the whole two and a half acres. Back then, I can't remember who was there, here on the board at the time.
Kate was there, you were there.
Yeah.
So-
But anyway, I think, you know, there is a sense of fairness here. It's fairness to, you know, Mr. Magazu, it's fairness in relation to, you know, what the board asked him to do. And, and there was no misunderstanding as far as what, nobody was talking about $200,000 because it's a buildable lot. Again, there was questions as to whether or not he got good information as to what he had was buildable. He believed it was buildable anyway, and he just needed this, that it was an expansion. But then we get other information. In the meantime, he got out and made the expenditure. So, you know, I, I think it's somewhat fair that we do it. And again, we need to do it with the best interest of the public as well, you know, in the neighborhood. So, you know, I, I think you said that there was another interest of clarity, but didn't bid, didn't come and didn't bid, but didn't inquire, it was in a butter?
I believe it was in a butter.
It was in a butter, so I mean, so maybe there's an interest in somebody else up there on the top of that hill that, you know, it has an interest too. You know, so if we put the minimum bid price, you know, at 50 or something like that, $1,000, and someone wants to come in and bid more, that's fine. Because that's what the market will bear. I mean, it's, it's, it's good to you, and it's good to, apparently somebody else has an interest in it. But it isn't of much use to anybody else, you know, in the neighborhood.
Well, I, that, that suggestion, I think, if we do the minimum at 50, you advertise it, and then no one else shows up. I mean, that, that's an idea that I could see working only because, again, it, it's a fairness thing. And if it's publicized with the minimum of 50 and no one shows up, I mean, it, there at that point, it becomes, well, it was kind of advertised. So, I mean, that's, what is, Mrs. Gonzalez?
I just wanna say, when this first came up, after we were all on board with that, you was gonna go, you went back, you did everything we asked you to, but in that meantime, Elm Street happened, if you remember. And we were claiming Saint Potter, and we were concerned about-
Square footage.
-square footage. And that's when the big concern came, and-
That's why we minimized the lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's why the lot was cut more, right.
Right.
But that's not an issue anymore.
Right.
They changed the rules.
Right, they changed the rules, so that ship has sailed. On the Saint Potter.
Yeah, so if we set it at 50,000, you potentially could be outbid.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So I, I go back to you and say, do you want to take that kind of chance?
Yes, I would.
Isn't that, isn't that on North Reading?
What's that?
Isn't that on North Reading? If we want to take the chance?
I, I got, let me just finish.
No, I understand what you're saying.
What I'm saying to you is, if you set it at 50,000, you could be outbid and then lose your opportunity, plus your investment that you've had inside.
That's correct.
So what I'm suggesting is you step down, and, and if we go down not to 50,000, but somewhere in between, you have a chance to, more than likely, I don't know, who knows?
I, I don't understand your statement.
What he's saying is, do you want to take the chance that you get bid up even more, or do you want to come down now? To something more, to come up, come up now?
Set the minimum price, I'm suggesting you set the minimum price lower.
If, if-
Higher than 50, but-
Hold on, hold on a second. I'm gonna have Mr. Massey ask a question next, because I think, yes, Mr. Massey?
Yes, sorry, I haven't written yet, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, these prices, I'm gonna be frank with you here, Mr. Magazu. Just because the town goes in the past does not set us up in a position to want to continue, continue down that path. That's, that is, and if I may continue.
Yeah.
Some of these old deals, I'm, I'm, every project is different. I know, certainly in my industry, we always say that, we never compare square foot prices to other square foot prices. Because every project and every property is different from what's under it, and compared to what's going in it. So, as far as these prices that, you know, Mr. O'Leary mentioned, what the market will bear is $50,000. I frankly, completely disagree that it's not what the market would bear. You'd walk out with a great deal. I don't think the town of North Reading and the people in the position that we're in can close at $50,000. That's my position, I think everyone, hey, hey, listen, I, I've done some real estate myself. I think, not selling real estate, but everyone makes a personal investment when they're looking to purchase a property. So that's the risk you take, as for why this board, or maybe this town, has suggested you spend money. That's an interesting piece of information. But as far as these old prices, to be frank, I, I, they don't carry weight.
Mr. Gonzalez?
If we could just clarify, if I remember correctly, this piece of land really can't be used for anything else, correct? It's, it's not used for, really.
The whole big parcel we originally talked about with Mr. Nikosia, yeah, the whole, a lot of wetlands.
A lot of wetlands.
Topographies like this.
Still bulldozers.
No, I don't, I, I don't believe, I think that was the discussion if I didn't remember.
Mr. Gobern, do you have an answer to that?
So, this started with Mr. Magazu acquiring a parcel of land that he thought was a billable lot, and turned out to not be a billable lot.
Right.
We own property to, I think it's the west, that caught his attention. We also own property to the east, which I believe the board asked him to also look at. That's why you have two parcels that are here. So I, I believe the town's position from a zoning standpoint is that the parcel is not buildable at the square footage it's at right now. The entirety of the parcel that was subject to the A and R may be buildable. So that's the portion that you own. We have not pursued that because we have not been directed to. So I don't want to misstate that. But we do know there are topographical challenges, and this area is a very steep drop off. There is a wetland, I think, in at least one corner of that larger lot. So there were, there are challenges here. But we got to this spot because Mr. Magazu came to us with a lot he had acquired, and was looking initially to make a better development of that lot. But now, looks at additional square footage in order to comply with his own.
I just can't find in this day and age where, I mean, even $100,000, even six-figure, I mean, I, I- Can't find property that stands for-
I mean, so here's how I see it. This should be all in fairness of the town. If it gets advertised, but that's the problem, though. I feel like we can only do so much. If it gets advertised and no one else comes out and buys it, that, I mean, we can't, we can't force anybody to give a bid.
Is it ultimately our decision, though, to either put it on the market?
Or do you want to get no taxes for it, and leave it as raw land?
Right, it's not, it's not on the tax roll.
Do you want taxes, or you don't want taxes?
So if you pay an additional $2,000 or $3,000 a month, let's just say, throwing out numbers, right? Compared to maybe getting out $100,000 in a bid price, you want, you want to take that $3,000, $4,000 instead of waiting?
But hold on, that's what we're talking about, though. But, but, Mr. Massey, if we go back out there and no one bids, what do we do? We can't hold it indefinitely until somebody knocks on our door because it hasn't worked. But that's what I'm saying.
And I don't think that's the reason for a town giving up their property, to be frank, just because it's convenient, no, I-
But hold on, I don't, I'm just trying to, no, and again, I'm just trying to follow. If no one else comes to the auction, I don't under, like, I, what else is there? Why aren't they coming?
We could, you know, we could not put it up for auction, wait till the market gets better, and we-
It'll be of no value to anybody.
As far as, as far as North Reading is concerned, if we don't think that we're making good money at $50,000, we hold off. And in two years, again, the three to four years property taxes compared to $100,000, if we wait two years, I'm just saying, I'll take the $100,000. And I, I think the position of this town, it's great, that means that, that's, I think the position of the town.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I just want, I just want to clarify for myself, but yeah. Those two pieces that we own, without Mr. Magazu's property, we cannot build on, they cannot be built on.
That is correct.
And we collect $0 on it.
Right. Is that a true statement?
So, I, I'm not having the plan right in front of me, but I believe the parcel to the east, the lower number parcel, number- So I'm fairly certain, number, number eight. Number 14 on Audubon Road at 3,300 square feet, I do not believe that's a buildable lot.
Right.
So we could not, I mean, it could be combined with something else, which is what's being proposed, and be built. Otherwise, it's land of, you know, relatively low, low value. The larger parcel, parcel eight on Audubon Road, just looking at its square footage and its frontage, could be buildable on its own. Again, there are topographical challenges, weather challenges that we have not pursued because we had no intention and no direction to be seeing and developing. The 12,000 square feet of that parcel that Mr. Magazu is seeking, along with the smaller parcel on the other side, that will all create one buildable lot of 20,000 square feet which are appropriated from it. Does that answer your question, Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes, which, if I understand from Mr. Magazu, he does not plan on building on that, he needs it for his leach field.
Correct. The large parcel, to make a buildable lot out of that two acre thing, you'd have to build a bridge. Okay, there's nobody going to extend that-
I've built a bridge.
Huh? But this is a different bridge. You have to bring it out, over, kinda, up above the Nikosia's house. Because the paper road ends, and it dives down like 12 feet there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just, the, the board's philosophy has changed over the years in relation to town old land, you know. Some boards say, let's keep it, you know, conservation-wise, we don't, you know, you do it, other boards in the past philosophically have said, this land is doing us no good here, why don't we get it back on the tax rolls? And, you know, go to the butter and say, hey, how about adding it to your, to your land? I mean, diagonally across the street from me is a 25-foot lot. I don't know how deep it is, it's probably 100 feet deep. There's two direct abutters who have no interest in it, because why do they want to pay taxes on land that's not gonna be used or built on anyway? You know, so it's, but wouldn't it be great if it was on the tax roll and just, you know, include it in somebody else's lot? So, so the philosophy has changed over the years, Mr. Massey, just to let you know. That some boards were more conservation-minded, and, you know, let's just keep the open space and don't do anything with it. And other boards have been philosophically saying, why are we sitting on this because it was tax titled land? We got it, we didn't, we didn't ask for it in the first place. We got it because someone didn't pay any taxes on it. And, you know, so let's get it back on the tax rolls. And sell it to a joint, parcels to either expand septic systems, you know, build a garage or a shed, or whatever they wanted to do with it, get it back on the tax rolls and have it paying taxes so that everybody else's burden is lessened. So, just a question of what philosophy you're in, you know, what you want to do. As far as the value of it, again, is there value in creating a buildable lot? Say, Mr. Magazu, absolutely, absolutely, there's a value to that. But is there value to anybody else? The market place will show that when you all have to bid, but probably not.
Mr. Massey?
As far as value, Mr. O'Leary, you've been a part of all these transactions here on this document, all of which we have sold our property for under $10,000 square, uh, $10,000. Sum is sized 270,000 square feet here for 1550. Now, again, I'm not sure on the deals again, but I do want to go to your comment on tax rules. You speak about tax rules and getting back on the tax rules. How much money will we actually make from a lot that's now is not buildable? I mean, let's be frank. No, I understand.
No, we're making nothing.
I can get that, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary, if he buys this property, how much money? Because you're talking about tax rules, and it's very important to get it back on the tax rules. How much really do we make a year? Is it a few hundred bucks, a thousand bucks? I mean, do you, I, I'm wondering if you're speaking to information that was maybe valuable as to the actual money that comes back on our tax rules.
Well, listen, what I'm saying is, there's no houses there right now. I mean, he's paying taxes on his, his lot right now, about $4,000 a year, for a non-buildable lot. You know, he actually got assessed higher because he came in and inquired for something more and got assessed higher than what the value was before. So he's paying $4,000 a year on a non-buildable lot at this point, and we're collecting nothing on the two parcels that are adjacent to him. Zero. So now, if he were able to build a house there short, you're gonna get a single-family home, if it's average, it's, you know, $10,000 a year in real estate tax. Now, put a kid in school, it's a net loss. But if you're building a two-bedroom home, different story, right? I don't know. So, that, that's, that's sort of what you have to weigh, you know.
I, you know, I just, you know, Mr. O'Leary, you gotta think about the precedent that you set for the rest of the community, and you gotta think about the precedent that you set. When you set this market right here, that you're setting, careful about what other people are gonna be trying to say, hey, my house is, if you tell me that I can buy it for a couple bucks a square foot, I'm gonna buy it, because...
I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm not saying anything. The board does.
So, so the...
The board does have to try.
Actually, at this point, I mean, no, I mean, the circle keeps getting bigger. But I'll put it like this, the market is gonna set it. And if we set the minimum bid at fifty, scream from the top of the raptors that this is happening and no one shows up, we can't do anything about that. We cannot force people to buy land.
Mr. Chairman, are we screaming from the top of the...
Well, we will, I mean...
Are we just putting in the paper and, you know, what is North Reading doing on our part to advertise it, you know, besides just the paper? An independent third party, if I may?
Do you notify all the butters?
Yep.
One day, advance notice?
That's disrespectful. One day advance notice, you said?
I agree with you.
Seriously?
I agree with you.
So, okay. Are we generally in favor of setting the minimum of fifty? I did some math out already, because we have to get it done. I think last time we split it up, twenty-one seventy-nine was the break. So whatever the smaller property motion will have ten thousand five hundred, the bigger one will have thirty-nine thousand five hundred.
There are two motions, I think.
And which one, just because I think last time, like, I, Mr. Massey had to reread it like six times, if I remember correctly, because we kept getting it, like, messed up. But which one is the bigger one, parcel one ninety-seven or two oh nine?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm confused at this time.
So one ninety-seven is the smaller, and then the portion of two oh nine is the larger. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Magazu, you originally came in with seventy-five K, and the properties from our town are assessed at one hundred and seventy-five K. And then we said, no, go up the bid, and then he dropped it.
Because I did my homework. I, you asked me.
I didn't ask you, no.
Well, somebody, the board asked me. Off the cuff, that's what I came up with, you know? I did my homework, that's... Yeah, that's five times the value of any of your previous sales.
I mean, that I don't think is...
The precedent, I think, needs to change for our town, Mr. Magazu.
It is what it is, but historically, I started this back in two thousand nineteen. And it was approved by three different boards already. I'm just getting tired. So I've spent a lot of taxes and money.
We're gonna move on to the motion. We've been talking about the same thing, everyone's gotten their, everyone said the same thing for twenty minutes where we're at, which is, it's fine. That's the beauty of the conversation in open session, so it's all been heard. And what we will do, though, is do the best ability to...
The minutes that were approved a lot of times for us.
...advertise it a little bit better. We're just gonna, okay?
And again, no, you said, offered seventy-five. If it, if you could sell it tonight for seventy-five, I'd take it. But it's gonna go to auction.
Mr. Magazu, through you, Mr. Chairman, we don't want to sell it tonight. I'm not sure what you, what, how we're gonna handle it. We just have to look out for the town, Mr. Magazu. And I'm sorry that you're the only bidder, but my position is that we have to look out for the town, and I hope my colleagues agree with me.
It is what it is.
So you said one ninety-seven was the smaller one, right?
Yes.
So, Mr. Massey, when you read the motion, that first one, number ten, is the one with the ten thousand five hundred, please? And then, and then the check, well, it's both numbers, I'm sorry. And then the one for parcel two oh nine is thirty-nine thousand five hundred as the minimum bid price. And then whenever you're ready, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sell by auction, town on land, identified as assessors, map eight, parcel one ninety-seven fourteen Autobahn Road. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Sixty, Section Seventy-Seven B, at a minimum bid price of ten thousand five hundred dollars. Subject to the following restrictions. Property shall not be subdivided, and buyer shall pay all advertising, legal, and recorded costs.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walner, Mr. Gobertto.
Just so, we're not trying to sneak anything in here, but that second statement regarding the transaction cost was not in the previous motion. So if Mr. Magazu had acquired it, we would have been on the hook for the transaction cost. We'd added it in there. That is the custom for these transactions, granted for much smaller amounts of money, obviously. We just want to point that out, that we're adding that, and it is my recommendation to include that in there, because that's the custom of actual transactions.
Any further discussion?
Just, do we need this other thing that we had, the other motion?
So the Form A application, A and R, was approved already.
Okay, so it's also...
It's non-conditional, this form.
Any further further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Mr. Massey, whenever you're ready in the next five, please.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would like to sell by auction a portion of town on land, identified as map eight, parcel two oh nine, eight Autobahn Road, designated as parcel A, on a plan entitled Plan of Land in North Reading, Massachusetts, prepared for John Magazu, dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Sixty, Section Seventy-Seven B, at a minimum bid price of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Subject to the following restrictions. Property shall not be subdivided, and buyer shall pay all advertising, legal, and recorded costs.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion?
Yeah, just an observation, I just want to point out, Mr. Magazu is not a bad guy here. He's looking after his interests, we're looking after the town. We're trying to work this out, it's been a long time coming. And, you know, it's a compromise on both sides, but you're not doing anything wrong there. You know, if I was to take your shoes, I would be too.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Number twelve, we're gonna skip over. We're going to take a look at this integrated agreement for the firefighters at the next meeting. So we will do that then. And then, Mr. Gobertto, can you explain again, number thirteen, why we have to pass it over?
The board could vote to approve the policy in the final form. We have reached out to their entities that were required to solicit feedback from, but unfortunately, we have not heard back from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. We've already mailed out the renewal packets, and we've already indicated that they will not have to annually seek to be fingerprinted. So if, when we hear something different from the state and we have to change that, it's gonna cause disruption as it is. I think we hold off, we'll give the state till the next meeting to respond back. Assuming they will not respond, I'll be recommending to improve the policy in final form.
Okay. Sustainability Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I had on, I think we skipped over agenda item eleven.
We did, oh, sorry, we did, yeah, thank you.
And I, you know, this is one, I don't know if we want to wait for Mr. Massey, because I do think it's important that we can follow the conversation.
We'll move in. Can we not hold it up for his absences, please?
No, Mrs. Gonzalez, we're just gonna go ahead. We're just gonna go ahead.
Well, I'll give an introduction, and I put a copy of the board's policy in there, which states that we go through and we do a renewal process for all of the select board's appointments on an annual basis. Now, the policy makes reference to identifying any boards or committees where there are challenges, et cetera, that might alter the normal course of appointments and reappointments. So that's why I've been putting this on the agenda each year. You see the complete list that's on there. This would be a moment in time to indicate whether there's anything that we think is not going in the direction we want it to go and that we might handle differently. Absent any such feedback to that extent, we'll advertise this listing, and you'll get all of the names and go through the process. Nothing of this process takes away the board's ability to make its votes with regard to appointments taking place, but we're just trying to make sure the board's following its policy. And at least having that initial discussion to identify if there's any boards or committees that make appointments for that, you know, we think might not be handled in the team fashion.
Okay.
I'm not expecting that there are any based on my communication with all of you, but to the extent there are, this would be a good time to bring it up.
I do remember this discussion, sorry, stepped up. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt and incorporate the licensing civil...
Oh, no, 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 we skipped over that, Nick. The one for, which one, the select board?
We're back on eleven.
We're back on eleven, because I skipped it. Yeah, this is just Mr. Gobertto explaining that, like, you know, the normal procedure's gonna go to, like, just advertise these out.
The short version, Mr. Chairman, through you, is we provide a copy of the list of the vacancies. We want you to know we're advertising all these vacancies. The board does have a policy that identifies if there's any board or committee that's kind of sideways, can identify. We'd like to see that done earlier in the process. I'm not expecting that there are any, but we want to make sure we follow the process and give you the opportunity to provide that feedback now.
And I think we're all interviewing them.
They usually, what they do is, when you apply the CF... No, 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 this is more like, so if you're liaison to something, and there's like a committee assignment, so...
I think it's important, I'd like to review it, that's okay, just for everyone here.
No, I think you should, definitely.
Yeah, and just for all the candidates, too. So we have, it's electronic application through the town website for any vacancy that we'll be advertising over the next couple of weeks. We leave the ad open for thirty days for anybody to apply. And then you will each receive a copy of any applications that come in from interested parties for vacancies on boards or committees that you're liaisons for. At the committee level, it's been handled a little bit differently depending upon the board or committee. Sometimes the committee brings candidates in and reviews them in a public meeting. Sometimes it's just between the chair and the liaison. There is some amount of discretion that goes to the individual liaisons, you as board members, for that. But ultimately, the appointments come back to the select board for a vote by the select board at one of the meetings in December for terms that are specified depending upon the vacancies. The, Mr. Massey, the liaison's generally asked to offer a recommendation based on the candidates for appointment, and then the board takes a vote. The board has the ability to not vote with the recommendation. I would say it normally does vote with the recommendation, but to be clear, because it has come up in the past, it doesn't, the board's not bound by that. The thing I want to make sure by having this listing here is that, to the extent there's any known desire to go in a different direction with the board, we just get that out there now. I wasn't expecting any, but I want to provide that opportunity. Hopefully that helps. Happy to answer any questions along the way, too.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
It is a bit of work, and it's a bit of getting on the phone with candidates that you'll see over the next few weeks. Hopefully, we have a lot of candidates for the vacancies.
Yep.
So grateful.
Okay. Back to fourteen.
Sure.
No, thirteen we're not doing because we're missing...
We're waiting feedback still from the state on thirteen. I'm not expecting there, I actually am not expecting that they're going to give us any feedback, but we can certainly provide them the opportunity to do so over the next couple of weeks.
Fourteen?
Fourteen, so this is a vote to modify the charge of the recycling committee. I know, Mr. Massey, there's an issue with regard to the meeting packet. If you do have the opportunity, take a look. We're simply moving from indefinite terms to three-year terms, which I think was brought up not only by yourself in a conversation, but by the chair of the recycling committee, questioning why someone had to sign up for an indefinite term when volunteering. So I want to recognize Mr. Rogers. He basically came up with a schedule. He came up with a schedule based on seniority to establish three-year terms, which is the most common term for appointments. And he has recommended, based on the seniority of the members, what those terms would be. You'll see that the longest term actually ends up being two years and two months because it's just a quirk in the calendar, we can't make an appointment for more than three years, and I wouldn't recommend that. So you'll see some that will come back up as soon as December to be reappointed. But I do think they have the allocation squared away. If the charge is approved, you'll see in the next agenda item, there was a candidate, who I believe is being recommended for appointment to one of those terms, that I would encourage you to also forward and act on that appointment. Hopefully, that's pretty straightforward. There will, no other changes to the charge, we're simply clarifying that the terms are three-year terms, staggered three-year terms.
Any questions before we vote?
The gentleman who led this trial, is that Mr. Racini?
So, Mr. Rogers, who's the chairperson, John Rogers, for the Sustainability Committee. I think he was responding to us in doing this, but I did hear him say the night it came up that he thought it was kind of strange that it was an indefinite term.
No, just wanted to thank him very much for hearing the feedback, I appreciate it. And I didn't even think about people signing up for indefinite terms, they're signing up for life.
That's funny.
Thank you.
Mr. Massey, you have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to modify the charge of the Sustainability Committee to create three-year terms as follows. Three full members and one associate member to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Two full members, one associate member to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Two full members and one associate member to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. And just want to quickly thank Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Walner, for also, I don't think, being close with the Sustainability Committee, I want to thank you guys all for carrying that out.
All right. And we can just do the appointments as well?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment to the Sustainability Committee for terms to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This is a roll call. Bruce McCardale, Deborah Pascal, and John Rogers. Apologize for mispronouncing names.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr., Mrs., Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Bruce McCardal, Deborah Pascal, John Rogers.
Mr. Walner?
Bruce McCardal, Deborah, Deborah Pascal, John Rogers.
Mr. Massey?
Bruce McCardal, Deborah Pascal, and John Rogers.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Bruce McCardal, Deborah Pascal, and John Rogers.
And the chair is Bruce McCardal, Deborah Pascal, and John Rogers.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment to Sustainability Committee for terms to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. This is also a roll call for Matthew Page and Brett Schultz.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Matthew Page, Brett Schultz.
Mr. Walner?
Matthew Page, Brett Schultz.
Mr. Massey?
Matthew Page, Brett Schultz.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Just before I vote, Brett is missing the Z on the end of his name.
Yeah, he's a Z.
Got it? I put it on his. Okay. And you will be correct. Matthew Page and Brett Schultz.
And the chair is Matthew Page, Brett Schultz.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment to the Sustainability Committee for terms to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Also a roll call for Alyssa Bailey and Gregory Racine.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Alyssa Bailey, Gregory Racine.
Mr. Walner?
Alyssa Bailey, Gregory Racine.
Mr. Massey?
Alyssa Bailey, Gregory Racine.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Alyssa Bailey, Gregory Racine.
The chair is Alyssa Bailey, Gregory Racine.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment to the Sustainability Committee for an associate term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. A roll call for Gene Osborne.
As an associate member?
As an associate.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion?
Isn't it exciting that the Sustainability Committee is now up to associate members?
It is, sorry, it's fantastic.
Fantastic. Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, Gene Osborne.
Mr. Walner?
Gene Osborne.
Mr. Massey?
Gene Osborne.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Gene Osborne.
Chair is Gene Osborne.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointment to the Sustainability Committee for an associate term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. A roll call of Gene Tamlin Hayden, associate member.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Gene Tamlin Hayden.
Mr. Walner?
Gene Tamlin Hayden.
Mr. Massey?
Gene Tamlin Hayden.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Gene Tamlin Hayden.
The chair is Gene Tamlin Hayden. Okay, cool. Legal bills.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for August in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-two cents as follows. General, eighteen thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Labor, twelve hundred and twenty-five dollars even. Total is nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr., sorry, by Mrs. Gonzalez.
Your promise.
Any further discussions?
Someone just refresh me on the difference between how money gets sent over to, what's the difference between labor and general? Is labor like a subconsultant to them?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, so, no, these are either expenses directly paid to corporate and page personnel, so staff, or in other agencies, apparently. But in this case, I think it's entirely lawyers. Or reimbursements, which is generally, it might be travel expense or printing or something like that. To the extent that there's a subconsultant, it's very rare, but it would be identified on here for payment. So if we had a recording for the registered deeds, that might be a cost that we'd avoid. But these are, these are all going directly to corporate page.
Okay, sorry, what's the difference between general and labor?
Oh, the general, I'm sorry, yeah. The second part of your question. So, general is pretty much anything that is not related to a labor relations, a legal expense, so it could be town meeting preparation. I think in this case, it could be pending litigation as well, if there were any applicable for labor. It's generally collective bargaining related, or it could be an employer-related issue as well, until they're separated. The appropriation, it's all under one bucket from a cost standpoint, but they are, when they're built, they're itemized separate. So, thank you very much. Love.
Did we second that?
Yes, you did, as Mr. and Misses.
Oh, that's right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Gobertow, you want to say anything before I have this next motion read?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of comments that I would like to offer first. This, this is Sonia, is hearing the audience, she's reminded me that we have our upcoming Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. It may be a bit later on calendar than it has been in the past, I think it's usually in October, but it is Saturday, November 2nd, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon, so if you've got anything in your house, reading from the list, car batteries, mercury thermometers, oil-based paints, paint stripper or thinner, lighter fluid, pesticides, roofing tar, propane tanks, tires, will the paper shredding machine be there? I have a box of it, so...
Bring it my office.
What about hard plastic?
I got a...
Yes.
Hard plastic is a yes, okay.
What kind of paint?
Paints is not accepted.
What's not accepted?